Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Davis Board Selectmen's Meeting for August 7th. At this time I'd ask that we rise and offer the privilege of allegiance led by Selectman Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This time I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes of June 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made to accept. Any comments, edits, modifications? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. At this time we'd like to, at the Selectmen's Meeting, we offer the opportunity for new public business. That is, if something isn't on the agenda and you want to bring it to the attention of the Selectmen, now's an opportunity. Is there any new public business this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. Item number three, the Board will consider a request by Jeff Clixtean to erect two signs on Route 62, one near Middleton and one near Beverly honoring the DHS State Champion 2017-2018 Girls Soccer Team. Jeff, would you go to the podium, introduce yourself, and let us know what you'd like to talk about?
Jeff Clixtean, 24 Richard Street. I am the current president of the High School Soccer Boosters. And as I think we all know, there's a sign at either end of 62 for the 2012-13 Boys Basketball Team. I think the girls last year had a great season. They won the state Division II championship, first time ever. So I would like to request that a similar sign, and I think you all have an email from me with a picture of it, be put up in the same locations on either end of 62. I have also contacted the Rec Department and I've gotten their approval to put a similar sign at Gates Field because that's the field where all these kids grew up on.
In comparison, is the sign the same size as the other ones we're talking about?
Same size, same font, same, just about everything. We, the boosters will pay for the signs. I assume the DPW will install them on posts and when I get them.
Great. The town clerk has informed me that you are correct. DPW will do the installation when they're prepared. Anything else you'd like to offer?
Not at all.
Then I'm going to turn to the Board. Selectman Mills?
You'll come in, thank you.
Selectman Limes?
Oh, I'm thrilled.
So am I.
I'm absolutely thrilled. My only question is, will we have any problems with Gates because it's a historical?
Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't think so.
Great. We'll do it again. How many seniors came back?
You know what, we got rid of 10 seniors.
Coming back?
We got rid of 10. So, but there's still a good team. Still a good team.
We have good people.
Yeah.
Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Selectman Bennett?
Thank you. I'm happy to see you're doing this, but I have a question through you, Mr. Chairman, perhaps through the clerk. When we granted the basketball team the right to put up signs, we discussed a number higher than two. I don't know if they only put two up or they went for seven. And I would hate for somebody to come back to this board sometime in the future and say, hey, the boys got seven, the girls got two. So do we know how many boys' basketball signs we'll put up?
I'm aware of only one, Mr. Chairman.
I know there's more than one.
There's one up beyond Connor's Farm on Valley Road, which is...
One on 114.
One on 114, yeah.
One coming in from Beverly.
That's three.
Yeah.
One up by Essex, the old Essex Ag.
Yeah.
I believe what was said was, put up as many as you want. I'm pretty sure that's what we said.
Whatever. So they put up more than two is my point. Are you happy with two?
I'll take as many as I can get.
That's right.
Well, that's what my point to you is. Can you...
I only knew of two at either end of 62. If the Board is good with any entrance point from any surrounding community into town...
Well, I would say that I personally, as a Board member, would be fine with any, there's already a basketball sign at, not any addition.
Okay.
Additional. But as many as currently are up on the...
As they have.
They have. Is that reasonable?
The clerk does remember something.
Mr. Chairman, I can remember the discussion in the evening that the basketball team asked permission. And I think it was a discussion that was generated from the Board as far as making sure that anybody entering a major, through a major route into Davis would see such a sign. And I think that's why you saw, you see three or four of them out there.
Okay. So that's my only...
Yeah, condition of your motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Selectman Clark?
My only comment would have been that, you know, I'm aware of the ones up on Valley Road coming in from Topsfield. And I think that'd be an appropriate location also. It's just beyond the Connor's Farm.
I can do the due diligence and find out where they all are and come back to the Board and tell you what they are.
Fantastic accomplishment. The girls pulled off and I'd love to see it.
Sure. Equal time. So, you know, I would be supportive of a motion that included the opportunity to grant you the same opportunity as what is out there for the basketball team and points of entrance into the town.
Right.
So are there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Do I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the DHS State Championship 2018 Girls Soccer Team signs to be put in as many places as the basketball signs are if they so desire?
Currently, okay.
Currently.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other comment or question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's a motion. Good luck to you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. This next item, item number four, the Board has requested to vote and take by eminent domain the fee in simple ways of the following roadways, laid out by the Board on May 8, 2018, accepted as town ways under Article 16 of the May 21, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, and as authorized by Town Meeting to acquire said fee in the ways: Brindelsper Road, Connerfield Drive, Cornell Road, Dodie Avenue, Gates Street, Hampshire Street, Healy Court, Regent Drive, and Twin Oak Lane. Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this your first time being the point person?
This is the first time being the point person. Definitely a new face, I'm sure for all of you. But kind of just introduce myself to everybody that may be watching online. My name's Stephen King. I took over for Rick Rogers, who was here for 30 years acting as a town engineer. And I recently took over for him in June of this year. The street layout acceptance program is one that he spearheaded in the Engineering Division coordinated. It's been going on since 2001, about 17 years worth of accepting streets, over 100 streets to date have been accepted formally by the town, former subdivisions and existing streets that were never properly laid out. As we've usually gone through before, there's a couple of steps and processes that we follow each year. Our Engineering Division layouts prepares the layout documents for the Board to review. We hold a public meeting in which you guys vote to approve the layout. Those layouts are brought to Town Meeting to accept the streets and authorize you, the Board Selectmen, to acquire the fee in way for the accepted streets. After a Town Meeting, we'll, we come back here to do the order of taking. And then once those are signed, we'll bring them to the Registry of Deeds to be recorded. At this time, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Selectman Limes?
I have none. Thank you.
Selectman Bennett?
Steve, do you have a 30-year contract with us? We don't want to lose any more people.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right. I'm all set. Thank you.
Selectman Clark?
What size shoes you get on tonight? You got pretty big ones to fill there from Rick. So good luck.
I think I'm a size up.
Selectman Mills?
I think I've been toilet-trained for 30 years of Rick Rogers. So, Steve, I think you'll get this one.
Thank you.
I have no comments, other than to welcome you to your first foray as point person. I'm sure you'll do fine. We look forward to a long service.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion on this. Actually, I'll read the official motion if you don't mind. Proposed motion, street layouts and acceptance order of taking the fees in ways. I move that the Board of Selectmen take by eminent domain the fee simple of the following roadways, laid out by the Board of Selectmen on May 8, 2018, accepted as town ways under Article 16 of the May 21, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, and is authorized by Town Meeting to acquire said fee in the ways: Brindelsper Road, Connerfield Drive, Cornell Road, Dodie Avenue, Gates Street, Hampshire Street, Healy Court, Regent Drive, Twin Oak Lane. Set taking of each fee in the way as being more particularly described in the respective order of taking to be executed by the Board of Selectmen on this date.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. How many are left?
Plenty.
Plenty. All right. Before we start, Agenda Item Number Five. There's a lot of fresh faces here and all the new faces here. And we welcome you to the Selectmen's Meeting. This is a public meeting and everybody's welcomed by the public. You'll note some of the agenda items here are marked "public hearing." That's an opportunity we will provide the public, an opportunity to speak to that agenda item. If it's not marked "public hearing," it's a presentation to the Board and not open to public comment at this time. So with that being said, a public hearing will be held on the application of Packaging Center, Inc., doing business as Super Stop &amp; Shop, 301 Newbury Street, William Handlin, manager for a change of offices at that location. Is there someone here representing Super Stop &amp; Shop? Then we will...
Motion to table?
I hear a motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll table this motion. And because of the summer schedule, this is an early meeting, a 6 o'clock meeting, so it's not unusual that maybe the applicant didn't realize this time change. The next agenda item, the Board is in receipt of an application by Decat, 87 Elm Street, Gaila Bartlett, manager for one-day wine and malt license on Thursday, October 4, 2018, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for an Oktoberfest event at that location. Mrs. Bartlett?
Hello. Thank you. First of all, we're very excited to host this event at Decat. I have with me today Don Preston, who's the CEO of Habitat for Humanity North Shore. The event will actually, a portion of the proceeds will go to Habitat, so that's why this wonderful gentleman is with me. The, it will be a wonderful event for us to showcase the beautiful space that Decat has to offer. Not only are we a community access center, but we're also a wonderful place to have events. So we are going to have Carl's Sausage Emporium. They will be donating all the German food, so bratwurst and sauerkraut and everything that you can imagine that's German. And Cappy's Liquors will be donating all of the German beer. Ah, it's wonderful. Do you see the theme? It's very magical. And we will also have Gourmet Delights out of Hamilton as our bartenders with their liquor liability insurance and also their tip certification. So we're very excited to have Gourmet Delights, who's a wonderful caterer, come with us as well. So that is what we're planning for our wonderful event. And tickets will go on sale Thursday if you approve our one-day liquor license. And they will be $25 each.
Thank you very much. And you told me you approved...
Yes, he has the liability insurance and the tip certification of our bartender that will be employed by Gourmet Delights catering that evening.
Thank you. Selectman Bennett?
No questions. Thank you.
Selectman Clark?
No questions.
Selectman Mills?
No questions. Sounds like a great effort. And thank you.
So it's German?
It's German. It's going to be fun.
Sounds good to me. Is it going to be outdoors at all?
It's going to be indoors because we're going to have the green screen and also to control the crowds and for my bartender and everybody else to make sure only people that have a ticket can get in. Indoors.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
I have no other questions, other than wish you luck and success. Don, this is a fundraiser on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. Did you want to say anything? I'm giving you free press.
Okay. Habitat has been doing a series, Habitat with Gala, and myself hosting a TV show now for about a year.
Riveting, riveting.
Riveting.
We're comical.
And so we've been talking about that. And also Carl's Kitchen donating, but they're also celebrating their 60th anniversary Sunday, the 12th, with an event in Peabody. So there's tickets available for that also.
And the big auction for Habitat is coming up?
Yep.
By November?
And we have an auction, our Habitat auction at Davis Board, which will be held in November.
November 16th.
And there's still volunteer opportunities for your current project?
Yes. There's volunteer opportunities at our project on Loraine Road in Hamilton and also at our restore in Peabody.
Which just...
Which is just open.
Thanks.
We encourage everyone to come visit and shop as well.
All right. Any other questions? Did I go around the Selectmen on this one? Selectman Clark, did I, any comments?
No comments.
Selectman Mills?
Nothing, thank you.
Selectman Limes?
All set.
I am all set as well. I'll entertain a motion.
So make a motion that we...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Oh, no, this isn't a public hearing. Go ahead, please.
Make a motion that we approve the application by Decat, Gaila Bartlett, manager for the one-day wine and malt license for Thursday, October 4, 6:00 to 8:00 for an October, German Oktoberfest event.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article number seven, Agenda Item Number Seven. A public hearing will be held on the application by George Gekes, doing business as Good Liquor Ice Cream Parlor. George Gekes, manager-owner, 46 Maple Street, for a liquor license at that location. Is there someone here representing that? If you don't mind going to the podium, one of the other things I should have said for the new people, new faces in the crowd, this is televised on Decat. We ask everybody to go to the podium and introduce themselves so that people who are watching this online, and you would be amazed how many are, can hear the news. Sir?
So, my name is George Gekes. This is my fiancee, Charity Benner. We're proposing...
You'll want to lean into the mic a little bit. Sorry.
We missed her name.
Yes.
Oh, they did.
Charity Benner.
There you go.
Thank you.
And we're proposing to open up or reopen the Goodies Ice Cream Parlor. We're not going to call it that, of course, but what we propose is it will remain an old-fashioned ice cream shop and based on a '50s theme, including, you know, '50s-style ice cream. It'll have the '50s theme inside. We're even going to have uniforms, you know, they would call me the soda jerk. Just don't call me a jerk.
You want to keep it as authentic as possible, 1950s, and stay with that theme.
Great.
New name, new inside.
The hours of operation, do you know yet?
We don't know yet.
We haven't really figured out what we're going to do, but we do want to keep it year-round. We know that.
We do.
All right. I'll open up to the Board. Selectman Clark?
No comments, other than I'm very proud of the fact that my great-grandfather's a person who invented the soda fountain. And we still have the original prototype and paper, patent papers for it.
Wow.
So I'll talk to you later about that.
You still reselling?
No, no, no. I loaned it to a previous owner of that truck.
That's amazing.
Selectman Mills?
Well...
He's going to talk.
It better be authentic because in 1950, I was right around the square. Liggett Rexall had a 15-cent root beer float that was wonderful, and they had the marble. And good luck. I'm glad that someone's going to reopen the place.
Thank you.
Very excited.
Selectman Limes?
I can't top them. I wasn't like born in the square. But it's a great, but I can tell you, I don't, never post on Facebook. I find it crazy. But you are going to see an explosion of people very excited. One of the biggest problems in Davis this year was the fact that Goodies was closed. And there was a real free-for-all of people that I'm surprised they weren't jumping off buildings. So they're going to be very happy. I hope you post that right away. You're going to make a lot of people very happy, so.
We definitely...
Congratulations. Thank you.
Selectman Bennett?
Thank you. Good luck. I hope it works out for you. I would just ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to the clerk if, when they figure out their hours, they report them to the clerk. So we have it on record, whatever you decide to do. Thank you. Appreciate it and good luck again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if all goes well, when do you anticipate opening?
We were targeting for September 1, but we're probably going to be delayed about a week or so.
Well, good luck. Good luck. I have no other questions. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to this application? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the application as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. The Board is in receipt of an application by Davis Senior Center, 25 Stone Street, Paula Corcoran, manager for one-day wine and malt license on Wednesday, August 22, 2018, 5:00 to 7:30 for a national accreditation celebration at that location. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, I can speak to this on behalf of Pam Parkinson, as the Board has allowed her the liberty of not appearing every time that she's running an event at the Senior Center. This is an event for the national accreditation celebration, and the application is complete. The tip certification is filed, so I would present this to the Board for approval.
Thank you. Selectman Mills?
I'm glad she doesn't have to come. They do beautiful work down there. I'm all in favor of the application.
Thank you. Selectman Limes?
Mostly I just want to congratulate them again. That accreditation is a lot of work, and they deserve this celebration. So kudos to the staff and the town for getting that accreditation.
Thank you. Selectman Bennett?
No comment.
Selectman Clark?
I have no comment.
I have no comments either.
I move as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. It is presented to the approval of the application. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine. The Board will hear from the Police Chief regarding a violation of the town's liquor license guidelines. Welcome, Chief. We hope you've had a quiet summer.
No.
I'm sorry to hear that. Chief, when you're ready, you can walk us through the particulars?
Thank you. On July 4, at approximately 9:19 at night, Officer Chase was downtown on Maple Street in front of Brothers Deli, conducting motor vehicle stop. While in the process, he was notified from a motorist that there had been some sort of altercation or looked like at least somebody had been knocked to the ground or was on the ground in front of Osborne's Tavern. Officer Chase cleared, went to Osborne's Tavern. He didn't visually see any altercation. There were five males out front. Two of them appeared to be talking in groups. So a group of two and a group of two appeared to be talking, and the fifth man walked off. None of them appeared to be disheveled, sweating, didn't have any signs of, indicate any signs of a fight that had taken place or anything like that. In conversation with all the gentlemen, they denied any altercation took place. Officer Chase then spoke to the fifth party involved that had walked off. He too, didn't appear disheveled, didn't appear that he was breathing heavily, and denied any access or any, had denied any incident had taken place in that there was any altercation at all. And he went on his way. The officers then cleared the scene and answered another call that was down the park at the same time. Come to find out through other ways, there had been some sort of altercation at the bar. I sent one of the detectives down, Detective Clarizia, the next day to investigate to find out what had happened. They did admit that there was an altercation. An off-duty bartender that was inside the establishment became involved with some arguing verbally with another patron that had come in. It got a little heated. The current bartender that was on the job at the time threw that party out. There was another male party sitting next to the originally ejected patron. Somehow, the bartender thought that that male was also involved with the first patron that had been ejected. So they subsequently tried to throw that bartender out. The off-duty bartender intervened in the thing, escalated the situation, ripping the beer out of this patron's hands. It went across the partway across the bar and ended up soaking another woman that was sitting there minding her own business. The bartender had then come out from behind the bar, was literally grabbing this patron around the head like a headlock and dragging him out the door. Another patron took it upon himself to get actively involved in this incident and assisted in physically pushing this gentleman out the door and then tackling him to the ground or pushing him to the ground. That was the findings of the detectives. The owner that worked with the detectives produced a video. It did in fact show those actions take place. At no time did the employees at the business make any effort to notify the police. No phone call was placed. No follow-up phone call was placed. When the officer was on scene, no effort was made to come forward to have contact with the officer. Therefore, they're in violation of the guidelines set forth by the Board for the licensing. I have checked with the ABCC where our guidelines are not considered a bylaw. It's not technically a liquor law violation, which we would normally cite under committing illegality on the premise.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Town Manager, is there anything you'd like to offer before I open to the Board?
No.
All right. Selectman Limes?
So, it sounds like a bunch of idiots is what it sounds like. So I guess my first question is, you know, I'm a little older, so I don't do bar fights anymore. But it used to be that that's what a bouncer was for, to remove somebody. So I know that we're just looking right now to make a recommendation of a hearing or what we're going to take as a movement. But I guess I need to have more clarity on just what you had said, which isn't a violation of the liquor license itself, is every time there's a disturbance in a bar, they're supposed to call is, so tell me, at what point are they supposed to call you when there's a disturbance, if that helps? I mean, every time that they disagree with somebody, every time they remove somebody?
No, it's when there's, when there's an actual physical altercation taking place, they're supposed to make contact with the police. And it would be... Calling for police and medical assistance as necessary to protect patrons against injury or to evict unruly patrons or to uncover unlawful conduct or to give medical assistance and provide police with requested information. And that's essentially what they failed to do under the guidelines.
So it sounds like as soon as the hands are put on somebody, you pretty much at that point need to notify police because, so that sounds like a violation. Okay. When you say cleared the scene, I'm assuming you mean when the first, the two officers cleared the scene, that means they cleared it without, you know, policing. They didn't ask everybody to leave?
That's correct.
Okay. And then this, so when we call for, so if I was to support, so I was just going to ask proper procedure. If I was to support the police chief doing a hearing, which is, in my opinion, the most appropriate person to have a hearing, then would they call in, would that mean to call in the witnesses that were listed, the ex-bartender, from what I understand at this report, in the report, the current bartender and the owners? Who else would be, who would be called to this hearing if that's what we were doing and having? So it says here that one of my options is to have the police chief conduct a hearing. Who then goes to this hearing? So I'm just...
So Chief, if this were recommended to you for a hearing, who would you compel to come speak on this matter? Would it be the people listed here in the police report?
Well, I wouldn't recommend that the whole, everybody involved be brought in as witnesses to testify. What we have is essentially the facts of the case, and it's on video. I think the owners, the license holders, would be the ones that we would invite in to have the hearing with.
Okay. So I think, Selectman Limes?
I did too much reading. I'm on the next case already. I'm surprised you didn't correct me.
Yeah, I was trying.
We were going to let you ride that one out.
Well, no. I mean, I just, so now I'm going to go back to this because I don't like to say names. I'm not one of those fans of repeating names. But one of these people, and I almost wish we were in executive session, because one of these people I have a question about. And in my opinion, that person used a motion that was from her previous profession that makes me a little nervous as to that motion. Putting someone's hand behind their back is detailed in this. So...
I think we're, we're talking about a violation of their liquor license and not a criminal, there were no charges filed in this case. So that's outside the purview of this Board. I think this Board is focused on a violation of their license at that establishment and not any actions taken.
But we're talking about the establishment not doing what their guidelines are, but in my opinion, it sounds like there was another violation here also. And did we not go after that person? So, you know...
But wouldn't that be, that would be a police matter as opposed to what's before us, which is a liquor licensing guideline issue?
If I may, if you're, if you're intending that there may have been an assault and battery that took place and that there should have been charges on that end, nothing led up that far to come to an assault and battery that somebody wanted to push forward. The individual that was involved wanted nothing... The individual that was involved wanted nothing further to come from the incident. They didn't wish any charges. They didn't want to be involved.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, if, I'm glad, I guess because I think there were two wrongs here, I'm glad that it's not an actual liquor violation. But it is a bylaw violation and I'll just have to listen to the recommendations for that and from the chief of what they think should happen or if we're going to bring it forward for a public hearing. But in reading this report, I found it a little crazy, that's all. Thank you. And I'm sorry I went to the next one, but now you know what my concern is on the next one.
Selectman Bennett.
Thank you. So, reading the report, you can't make this stuff up. It's amazing how things escalate and get out of control. And we do have Section 8 that is cited, a violation of our guidelines. And I think that the chief should come back to us with explanation and suggestion of what we should do with that establishment and its employees and owners.
Selectman Clark.
As part of a major reading assignment this weekend, I spent a lot of time on this paper we got with this and the other case we had. And it's kind of exacerbated by me because several of these people are people who many of us know personally and have grown up with, et cetera. Makes it kind of difficult. I would await what the, what, chief, your recommendation would be for us to do, whether you want us to have a hearing on this. If there is, if it is strong enough for a hearing for the violation. And I'm a little, it's a little cloudy to me when you were saying that our guidelines aren't bylaws, if you will, so that they may not be enforceable.
Well, according to the ABCC, when I contacted them to ask about this, they specifically inquired whether or not this was a bylaw or whether it was just town guidelines. And it's expressed to me that this is just town guidelines, not a bylaw. There was a similar case in Saugus where the town wanted to go after another venue down there that they had a lot of problems with and because they refused to report it. A stabbing that occurred in the front parking lot and they refused to get involved with it. They, the Saugus folks sought to revoke their license and the ABCC shot them down, saying they were overstepping the bounds because it's not a bylaw. They don't have the authority. So with that in mind, what my recommendation would be is for the license holders to come forward and to explain before the board why they're not living up to the guidelines set forth by the licensing authority. And it also then sets the precedent that it's been documented if there's continued negative behavior down there that violates the guidelines, you're essentially, you're building your case for going further.
I'd certainly hate to see it escalate to a stabbing.
Yeah, I don't, I was just citing the case that was similar because it was a guideline and a bylaw. We don't have issues down there like that.
Selectman Clark, any more questions?
I don't think so, no. Just that, you know, there was, there was with the altercation, we understand, head butting that involved, ended up with a concussion and a fractured skull. It starts to get serious. And I just don't think it's the kind of activity we want to have in Davis. We don't want a repetition of what the office was 20 years ago in Davis. And I certainly, that was a rather unsavory situation for a while. So I'm a little skeptical. And the very least is that I want to have the owners come in and explain to us why they didn't report it to you.
Selectman Mills.
Thank you. I'm just kind of interested that the license holder, the manager of the license, isn't here tonight. And I wonder if that person was notified of
I think that's normal practices to first hear from the chief, then based on a recommendation of the selectmen to decide whether we're going to go forward and compel him to come.
Well, I want to support the chief in whatever his recommendation is on this. I note too that there's a report of a fracture and a concussion. I think this is very fine police work, by the way. Really excellent, excellent reporting. And chief, exactly what is, what is your recommendation or request of the board?
I'd request that the board bring to the license holders forward to a hearing before the board to answer to why they didn't live up to the guidelines set forth by the town.
It seems to make sense to me. And I note that the chief is a little naked as we are in that these are guidelines and not town bylaws. So I don't know what potential for penalty or license suspension for a day or whatever, any official action. But certainly if the chief recommends that there be that process before here, I think that should be supported and we should do that.
So my
May I ask another question?
Can I offer my comments and then open up the questions?
Oh, I was going to ask you a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
On the, on the guidelines that we have the bartend, the owners sign now when they pick up the license, is this written in that guideline?
Yes.
Okay.
The chief is quoting and actually the clerk has the guidelines with him.
So that's exactly what they're signing?
So from my, from the perspective that I would take is that an illegality happened based on, let me rephrase that. An assault that may not rise to the level of the police pressing charges happened. A patron, a employee who was not on duty, laid hands on another patron and physically ejected them. I don't, given the video that the chief is discussing and the reports are read, I don't think that's a matter of question. I think that that happened. The, our guidelines fall into what I consider, and this is my opinion, two categories. One is direct liquor service guidelines, which mirror a lot of the ABCC and therefore are actionable and supported by the ABCC. Other guidelines are, this is what we want for those people we grant a license to, to happen in this town, including this section, which actually was born out of an issue that we had many years ago at an establishment that's since been torn down. Tequilas had an issue where illegalities happened on the present premise, actually, and they didn't call the police. And so that's why this section was added or beefed up in our guidelines. I think personally, I think it's fully appropriate for us to have that owner here, discuss what's going on, what his remediation is, and have him speak to how he's going to protect the public interest and the town's interests of its license in the future. I think the chief's appropriate if we were to let this go. This should be a discussion that should put the owner and other liquor license holders on notice personally. So those are my personal opinions or as one voting member of the board. So I'll entertain a motion regarding this, this subject.
Does the chairman make a motion that the owner of the premises come before us and that the chief give us some direction and guidance as what he feels is appropriate action for the board to take?
Would that be a public hearing you're calling for?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sure.
Second.
Motion made in second to have a public hearing regarding this situation with the owner of the establishment. Are there any other comments on the motion? I would ask that the town clerk work with the ABCC and find out what the limitations of our, if there were to come a penalty phase, what the limitations of our penalty phase might be based on the guideline versus bylaw level. I think that would give me comfort.
Yeah, I already have it on my
Perfect, I would have thought you would have.
Yep.
There's a motion on the board and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passed. We will invite them to, we will pass them to our next meeting.
First meeting in September.
First meeting in September. Thank you. Thank you very much, chief. We appreciate your diligence in this. For the next agenda item, the board will hear from the police chief regarding a nuisance slash dangerous dog complaint and is requested to appoint a hearing officer for findings of fact and a recommendation of the board consistent with Massachusetts general law. Mr. Town Manager, do you want to introduce or do you want to go right to the chief?
I can, I'll do a quick introduction. You did receive a packet of information with your agendas this past Friday regarding this topic. And in a moment, the chief can describe generally the incident that caused the complaint to be filed. You have a brief memorandum from Aaron Henry, our Director of Land Use, which does a couple of things. It summarizes state statute in terms of what the board's options as the hearing authority ultimately are with respect to a complaint of this nature. And also within that is a recommendation from town council. Dave DeLuca and I spoke and it is within the board's authority to delegate the role of hearing officer to the town manager or the chief of police, which would allow for a public hearing to be advertised and for the chief of police and the town attorney to preside over that hearing, at which time anybody who wished to speak on the subject would be invited to do so. And after which, a transcript could be brought back to the board of selectmen along with some recommendations from council and the chief based on the findings of fact. The board also has the authority under the law to designate the disposition of a penalty, if any, to said designee. But generally, the board would be the ones making a determination as to whether a complaint resulted in a, an animal being found as a nuisance versus a dangerous animal. And then within those two categorizations, there are a subset of options available to the board. So I think I'd like to let the chief describe generally the incident and he and I would be able to answer any questions you may have about the process.
Thank you. Chief, please.
On July 12th of this year, at 8:46 in the morning, the resident of 34 Burley Farm Road called the report that a dog had been attacked by a pit bull that lives at 32 Burley Farm Road. It was reported that the responding officers went there. It was reported that the owner of 34's dog was running loose in its yard, running up along the property line by the fence line. The pit bull at 32 busted out from under the fence and then attacked the dog at 34. And there was some significant injuries around the neck and mouth area of the dog. They were separated by the son at 34 Burley Farm. Fortunately, nothing, he didn't sustain any injuries from the dogfight. And the owners of the pit bull were spoken to, contacted. The dog was taken, brought back into the property. The officers did discover and looking at the fence line that it looks like there's a loose area of fence that was there that allowed the dog to wiggle under and get out and then go after the other dog. And they gave some advice and recommendations to shore that up so that it wouldn't happen again in the future. And that is what's led us here today.
Thank you. Selectman Bennett, would you like to set discussion?
Well, just clarification. The town council recommends that we designate the chief of police as the hearing officer. But is that not our role to be the hearing panel?
So
Are we aggregating that ability?
I'll turn to the town manager.
You're right. Under the law, the board of selectmen is the hearing authority and would have the ultimate decision-making power. In discussing this matter with Attorney DeLuca, he recommended, as has been successfully done in a number of communities, these cases can often lead to quite a bit of testimony and it would potentially dominate one or more evenings for the board of selectmen televised. It becomes, it can be a very emotional, you know, event or hearing. And what has worked well in other communities is to have it at a neutral location with the chief of police and the town attorney there to conduct the hearing. David DeLuca will be on hand to answer any questions that are legal in nature. And then a full transcript could be provided to the board so they could read everybody's testimony on the matter and have some guidance from the chief and from the attorney. Ultimately, the board would make a decision based on the findings of fact, what they felt was an appropriate outcome. It's just an option that the board has under the law.
Thank you for that explanation. I'll defer to the rest of the board on their thoughts to hear what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Clark.
Just based on the amount of information we got for this case and background, history of the, one of the animals involved, this seems to be a little bit more complicated than the case we had back in 2009. And I want to make sure we do things the right way. And I'd like to have Dave DeLuca present when we're doing, conducting our hearing for our, for the public hearing that we'd have.
Thank you. Selectman Mills.
I think the town council's recommendation is very good. Hate to put any more work on to the chief. But it seems, it's an important, by the way, I think that Aaron Henry did an excellent job of making this situation as far as remedy and process to be understandable. And very simply, I just think that if the chief will do it, he should be the hearing officer and to conduct the hearing and make findings of fact. And then perhaps a recommendation to the board along with whatever findings of fact are developed so that the board then I think needs to take, under the statute, needs to take some official action. So I guess we start with the chief's hearing if that's
Selectman Lamis.
So, back to my original question. All of the people that are in your report on this will be invited to this hearing?
All the folks that are involved in this, the folks that may have been involved in other instances or neighbors that wish to come in and testify.
So it would be public? It would be posted in public and neighbors and others could come, okay. I'm a little confused because this is not a public hearing for us. But in the letter sent to the owners, paragraph two says that they are demanded to be here tonight at 6:15. Please be present at this hearing to submit testimony to the board concerning this matter. So we are going to hear testimony tonight. Well, that's what it says. That's the letter that was sent to them.
We followed up with the owners and their attorney after that letter went out. I think that the letter went out to make sure that the concerns were, that they were, number one, aware and number two, had an opportunity to take some immediate remedial action. And I know through staff that some corrective action was taken on the property after the incident occurred. But we did, we followed up with everybody after that letter went out to make them, make sure that the interest tonight would not be a public hearing.
Okay.
That if the board chose to hold the public hearing, it would be either at a future selectmen's meeting or at a hearing that would be advertised in the newspaper for a time and date.
Thank you for making sure that got corrected because I would have been uncomfortable with only letting one person testify and not have invited everybody else.
That would not have happened.
So that is fine. I agree that the chief of police is certainly the most qualified person to understand level of danger. So I'm really happy that you're willing to do this and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
As for my comments, I too am concerned about the latest incident, but the fact that it's not the only incident on police record. We do have options, as Selectman Bennett pointed out. We actually have four options before us. We could do nothing at this point. We could stop and it would be done. We could have a board, a hearing with the board of selectmen would be the hearing officers and take testimony and render a decision. We can do as the, we could have the, appoint a hearing officer, which the town council is recommending the chief of police. And within that, they could render a decision. We could give them the opportunity to render a decision or come back to us with fact finding and recommendations. I support the option where we appoint a hearing officer, it being the chief. It's a fact finding. And that's the part of the police professionals, you know, experience is to find fact. It's certainly an emotional subject. It'll be emotional from many sides, for many reasons. And I think that putting it in the hands of authorities who deal with fact finding on a regular basis and coming back to us, removing some of that emotion is an appropriate thing to do. This is a recommendation by the chief and the town manager as to a course of action. The decision on which of those options is ours. So I look to the board members for any further comment or a motion.
Well, I would comment that I'm fine with the chief having a hearing and bringing the facts back to this board to make a decision.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion, yes. Because it should be us that makes the final decision.
It's a motion to appoint the chief of police as a hearing officer to conduct a public hearing in which all parties involved or interested would offer their facts and testimony. The chief will then bring that to, bring a report back to us of fact finding and a recommendation based on that fact finding. And a second public hearing will be held as, I'm sorry, a, that recommendation will be heard at a future selectmen's meeting for our consideration. The public hearing will be the hearing that the chief will conduct. The public hearing will be the hearing that the Chief will conduct. That's the motion.
Second.
Without embellishing it too much. And it's been seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes five to one. Thank you, Chief. If you follow your path, and I'm sure we will...
Who's five to one? Who's the sixth person up here?
There's only five of us.
There's only five of us.
I mean, five to zero. I meant five to zero. I apologize. I apologize.
Public record.
Public record, five to zero. And the, this certainly will be a public hearing and well-publicized as such.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
At this point, the Article 11, Agenda Item 11, the Board will hear an update from the Finance Director.
A final update.
You make us sad when you say that.
So, thank you for having me, and I just, no, I've spoken to everybody individually, but I just wanted to also say that it's been a pleasure working for the Town and for this Board has been, has been great, and I really appreciate all of the three years I spent here. You know, I know it was quick, and I would have liked to be here longer, but I appreciate working with all of you. And so, one of the things that we did was implement a quarterly financial update. After each quarter, we would go through the budget to actuals and where we were for revenue. So I was going to end on that note and then just take any questions that you have going forward, and then also just let you know that, you know, I will be creating a number of different places for financial information that you've gotten used to from coming from me, to be continued along and be accessible through the Town Manager's office until a replacement is in place. So this is the form, it should be in your packet, the quarterly update. This is not final. The auditors are coming in after Labor Day, but this is, this is the unaudited numbers, so I'll just say, from a revenue standpoint, another, another very good year where we've generated probably just over $1.5 million that will become free cash by bringing in more revenue than the assumption that we built into the budget. As you can see, again, what has been carrying and has been improving year over year and not bucking the trend at all has been the increase in motor vehicle excise tax. With a $4.3 million assumption that we built into the budget, we collected just over $5 million. So $740,000 generated free cash in motor vehicle excise is a significant number. It's a significant contribution to the cash balance that the Town will have going forward. And it's, you know, every time we see a number year over year, it's, we think it's got to stop, this trend can't continue, but we top it again and again. So part of that is to do with market, part of that is to do is turnover of vehicles because of the way that motor vehicle excise tax is collected. But at the same point, $5 million marks the highest number in the Town's history. And then hotel motel is a number, is another number that I know the Selectmen have been interested in and has continued to trend up as well. That is also a high mark in that category. The only other ones that I would point to is also the investment income, which is the responsibility Joe Collins, not as his role as the clerk, but as his role as the treasure collector. And so, as the market has adjusted since 2008, and now we're 10 years out from that period, and interest rates have started to climb back, and now a significant revenue source that the Town used to have previously is not back to where it was, you know, 20 years ago, but it's back to where it was to helping the Town, putting our money to work for us when we keep it in the bank. So that is one where $110,000 was assumed and almost $300,000 was brought in. So that's a category also that has trended up for us. So in the bottom-line revenue, just so we see how this works, at the top, anything that hasn't been collected for real estate or personal property, that doesn't affect free cash. It's considered a receivable, so it is on our books. The money at the bottom for the local receipts and state aid of $1.5 million is what we would see replenishing our free cash use after last Town meeting. On the bottom, despite a very difficult budget year in terms of snow and ice and fire O.T., because of, you know, I think sort of the, part of the culture in this organization is that we still had a number of departments, despite the fact that we had a difficult year, turning back money. So while we had turned back significantly more in previous years when snow and ice was more favorable, we were still able to almost turn back a million dollars from the budget, actual spending below budget. So overall, we're looking at $2.5 million generated towards free cash that'll be certified soon as of 7/118 that will allow the Town to continue to budget cash for capital. And then on the back of that page, I also just wanted to review where we were for reserve and cash balances. Obviously, the last time we had free cash certified, it was over $7 million. That's a very good number. The concerted effort that we made with the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom and Town Meeting, was to begin to move that money from free cash into reserves as we get ready for the Smith School, and then also get ready for potential issues that may come up besides the Smith School. So the FY18, again, unaudited balances, but the balances that we have and will be audited soon, stabilization fund, the general stabilization fund, that is a two-thirds vote from Town Meeting to use, is just over $1 million. The school construction stabilization fund, which was previously used for the high school, we've now switched to preparing for the elementary school, is just under $5 million. And then, there's two other reserve funds that have sort of waned, but were previously in use and can still be funded in the future, the revenue stabilization fund and then the education stabilization fund. So as a total of all four of those, we're looking at just over $6 million as of 6/3018, which is a healthy balance for those. But again, the planning in FY19, as you can see on the right, is to increase so substantially, so $500,000 into the stabilization, general stabilization fund for projects that are not related to the Smith School project. The school construction stabilization fund will be increased by at least $1 million, and then the other two funds being left the same would end up around at least $7.5 million at the end of FY19, looking ahead to the Smith School. And then I would just mention one other thing, which is the OPEB Trust Fund, which was established about 18 months ago. Joe Collins is the trustee of that fund. That is a balance that is now beginning to work for us. Excellent returns in FY18. The market value of that fund as of 6/3018 was $5.5 million. $780,000 budgeted in '19 to go into it means that that fund would theoretically be at 6.3. Again, that's a little bit different because the market could actually reduce that balance, but compared to towns around us, that gives us a very good position in terms of the OPEB Trust Fund as opposed to other systems. And then I just wanted to update you, there will be a new actuarial valuation available to you soon for the OPEB. I do have the most recent retirement system actuarial valuation. The Town has gone up from 55% funded to 58.6% funded. The total liability is $190 million with $117 million in market value of assets in the Dammers Retirement System. The Dammers Retirement Board made a, an effort to reduce the assume rate of return, which is one of the big assumptions that builds the liability, in, from January 1st, 2014 to January 1st, 2016, the Dammers Retirement Board reduced the assume rate of return from eight to 7.75. And then, most recently, in the latest study for January 1st, 2018, they reduced that again to 7.5. So we're more in line. They want to continue to do that over time, but without putting undue burden on the Town. So each study ideally would be reducing that further and further. And then the other major change that they made was that they adopted a schedule that would fund the pension system by 2035 instead of 2036. The legislative, the, by statute, we have to have a schedule by at least 2040. So those are some, and actually, Joe Collins also serves on that Board, so he is heavily involved in all of these things that I'm discussing and can continue to answer any questions in the future when I'm gone. But those are the major things that I wanted to touch on, and I can take any questions.
Thank you. Selectman Clark.
No comments. I'm very impressed with it, Travis, and I'm very sad to see you leave. You've done a great job, and good luck in the future. And please remember us if we have to get connected to the MWRA.
I already told him we're not taking a drop of his water, no matter what.
I appreciate that.
Selectman Mills.
Does Joe Collins have your cell phone number?
He does.
That's a good thing. Nice job. Sorry to see you go.
Thank you.
Selectman Alas.
I'm sorry to see you go, too. I really appreciate you always answering. I think people assume that accounting is the same all over, and municipal is its own science, and you really were great about making us understand the differences. Most of us only know GAAP, and it is a big difference, and you've done a great job. And your reports are fantastic. I'm really going to miss them. I actually read them on Friday nights, so... And I did, as I look at this report, I have to say, the only sad thing I see here is that when you see investment income return go up, that means our debt interest also goes up, and so hopefully, we can get this Smith School planned out and use the timing as quickly as possible, and hopefully, you'll leave some of your magic on that for us as to some sort of a plan. I think we're going to have to be faster in planning out our debt than going slower. So that's what I see there, and that trend will take another 10 years to reverse. I also see here that this, the free cash means I'm not going to get as many projects as I like when we go into the next budget. This is about as tight as, you know, it looks great, we have, wow, 107% revenue, but this is really tight. It's not a big difference of what the projection of free cash is here, and so as Selectman Mills always says, no more projects for Diane. I'm done. But that's actually great budgeting that we are that tight. So thank you, and thank you, and I hope, wish you great success, but we might come visit you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Selectman Bennett.
Thank you. I'll echo what Diane said about moving fast on the debt for Smith School because the interest rates are going to go up, without a doubt. But Travis, you did a great job, but I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the consumer out there buying new cars and filling up the hotel rooms. You really can't project these type of numbers. You can't have a crystal ball for that stuff, but we're very fortunate that those numbers are up. Thank you.
I too want to offer my thanks. Sad for us, happy for you. Everybody should grow in their profession and move in a direction that supports their life, their life goals. So I'm sorry to see you go, and I'm happy with the report. There's, you know, as Selectman Bennett said, we tried at the beginning of the year to be as fiscally prudent as possible, to can anticipate the fluctuations of some of these numbers, and coming out ahead is just a benefit to the Town. Free cash fluctuates, and that's what it's there for. So I appreciate the fact that this is moving in a forward direction, a positive forward direction. So again, I'm sorry to lose you, and thank you very much for your years of service here. Thank you.
Thanks very much. It's been a pleasure.
Mr. Chair, we will, I'll be providing a brief update on Smith School under the Manager's Update, and we can talk a little bit about that. I'll also add, I think I'm very sad to see Travis go. I think that the Town probably got about 10 years' worth of value out of him in the three years he was here. One of the things that I think made Travis unique and will make him tough to replace is that he could get into the weeds and understand anything you pointed him toward, but he also got the big picture. And I think a lot of the department heads, and I in particular, benefited from having him on the team. And we are actively recruiting for his replacement, but in much the same way Steve King had a challenge in front of him replacing Rick Rogers after 30 years, I think somebody's going to have a hard time replacing Travis after three. So thank you, Travis.
Appreciate that.
So this is an update. There's no necessity for a vote. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sir, we did table the application of Stop &amp; Shop. Are you prepared to go forward, or are you waiting for someone to join you?
I am prepared.
Okay. Selectman Bennett, you want to table it?
So motion's on table, the hearing on Stop &amp; Shop.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Which is a public hearing.
Yes. We will turn to the public hearing, Agenda Item Number Five. A public hearing will be held on the application of Packaging Center, Inc., doing business as Super Stop &amp; Shop for your one Newbury Street, William Hanlon Manager, for a change of officers at this location. Sir, could you introduce yourself?
Yes. Eugene Richard from Hurwitz, Richard and Sensabaugh for Packaging Center. I must apologize for getting the time wrong. I had a crazy day. I always check the agenda. I didn't get to it today.
No worries.
And I was told about New Brothers, and my, I just got, got away from me. This is basically a housekeeping matter. The Packaging Center, Inc., officers and directors, there was a lot of turnover or change, and I could run through it for you, but basically, all the President, Treasurer, and Secretary changed, as well as all but one of the directors. At the store level, there won't be any change. That manager is the same. The operations will be the same. It's basically a corporate-level changes.
So the clerk has informed me, all your paperwork is in order. This is not a change of the manager of record for the license, this is corporate officers. I'll open it up for the Board. Mr. Mills.
No comment.
Selectman Alas.
No. He's going to be the fastest rush you ever had.
Your state for dessert. Selectman Bennett.
No questions.
Selectman Clark.
No questions.
And I have no questions. We appreciate your diligence in joining us for this, and the time was, normally, we are seven o'clock start, but with the summer schedule, we started early. So no harm, no foul. We understood that...
I do apologize again.
Please don't.
Hate for that to happen.
Don't feel you need to. This is a public hearing, so I'll entertain any questions by the public on the change of corporate managers.
Take a motion and close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll accept a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made to accept the application as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sir, good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 12. The Board has requested to vote to approve the sale of $4,575,000 in general obligation bond anticipation notes. Should I start with the Town Clerk, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Town Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we recently refinanced some outstanding band bond anticipation notes that we had, as well as we borrowed new money pertaining to the authorizations that the Town Meeting approved in May. Primarily, we have this Smith School feasibility study, Highland School roof, the second piece of the I&amp;I engineering work and related for the water and sewer, and... So we sold $4,575,000 in bonds, which I presented to you earlier, for 3% general obligation bond anticipation notes dated August 17, 2018, and payable August 16, 2019, and I would ask that the Board vote affirmatively on the sale of these notes.
Thank you. Selectman Mills.
I trust Joe's counting, and I wouldn't know how to question anything about it, so thanks for doing a great job, Joe.
Thank you.
Selectman Alas.
And with rates, why did we rewrite part of them?
Bond anticipation notes are only allowed to be sold for a year, so every year, you have to either permanently finance them or run them out for another year.
So we're just rewriting those for another year?
And we also borrowed new money for the new projects, as I mentioned, that were approved in the annual Town Meeting. Simply stated, a bond anticipation note is a temporary loan till you get to the point where you permanently finance the project.
And so, my reason for asking is because of rates. So are you feeling that either, A, we have another fund that is going to pay them down, or do you feel that the rate of 3% is something better than doing something permanent, waiting out another year? Is my concern?
At this point in time, budgetarily, we're doing, as Travis and I and the Town Manager put together a plan for financing, and our debt service allows us to refinance, and when we put together a debt service budget, we estimate higher as far as the interest goes than the sale normally ends up at. So there's enough money in the debt service budget to cover the sale, and until, until we get to a point where we have an appropriation approved by Town Meeting as far as the Smith School goes, this is basically the way we would go. The authorization would be for 20 years initially, but every time you use a year on temporary financing, it cuts down on the amount, the length of the actual sale. So in other words, if we go two years in bands, temporary notes, it would be 18 years of permanent financing. But it's all, it's, nothing unusual has occurred at this point in time, and everything in the debt service budget has been built to do this. the debt service budget has been built to do this.
And I think, Diane, once, you know, we're in the feasibility study for the Smith School, so it wouldn't be prudent at this point to be issuing long-term debt on the project. Town meeting may reject the project. Once the project, once we have a budget and we have started construction, I think we'll probably end up recommending what was done last time around, which is where you would issue a portion of the permanent debt early in the project, depending on rates at that time, then you would issue the balance at the end of the project. But it's difficult to be issuing the permanent debt without.
Yeah, and it's just that everything, I'm reading, I am not a financial planner, but everything I'm reading is almost fearful of how fast rates are going to go, more so than I think it did 10 years ago. And I'm just looking, you know, of course, Smith School, one of the great things about the high school was the way it was financed and that we did it right. And so I'm just looking at, again, and I recognize that you're doing a great job in monitoring our debt ceiling of where we have asked to be. And I just, I'm very fearful of the rates. So I'm kind of probably going to hop on that for a while. But if you think that going out a year at this point is okay, I'm okay with that.
And I think when...
I think I'm just going to be watching that a little closer.
As we get into the fall, we'll have, so we have a preliminary cost estimate for the Smith School project. We have a very aggressive timeline to try to get that project before town meeting by January or February. As we get closer to that town meeting, I think is when we'll fully engage with First Southwest to get some strategy recommendations from them in terms of how we should thinking about, how we should be thinking about structuring the debt, once we get into construction next year. But over the next couple of months, getting that project designed and getting our arms around what the true cost estimate's going to be, in parallel with that, we'll start engaging First Southwest to get some modeling in terms of what the market is doing.
And I didn't need to make you start talking about the Smith School before.
No, 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 I think that's...
But, and I'll wait for your update, but it's just, I'm very concerned.
Interest rates are a wild card. The cost of steel a year from now is a wild card. I mean, we have some, you know, the cost estimators, I think, are, they're going to hedge like everybody else at this point, because there's a lot of, there are a lot of uncertainties in the market.
And I don't want to get crazy, but tariffs are a little nerve-wracking these days, too, on some of those things. So I'm just, I've probably read too much.
We'll stop giving you such thick packets, then.
It's not your packet that scares me.
Want to say?
Yes, thank you.
Selectman Bennett?
Thank you. So, the bottom line is, there's a lot of variables out there that we can't control, and we can't really do anything about borrowing until we know that we're going to be able to move forwards. Joe, I heard you say that it's advantageous perhaps to pay the debt back in 18 years rather than 20. I don't quite understand that, because that's a bigger nut to pay every year rather than spreading it out.
Maybe I can further clarify what I stated. It's Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, specifically designates how many years you can incur a debt for a specific project, water mains, drainage, departmental equipment, et cetera. So a perfect example would be a fire truck, piece of equipment. 10 years, you might be allowed to borrow for 10 years to pay it off. But if you go out and temporarily finance, it cuts down on the amount of years that you can permanently finance at the end.
So by borrowing now, you're already used up a year that you're entitled to?
That is correct. And, but generally, temporarily borrowing at the bands, it's cheaper than permanently financing.
Okay. Stay tuned, I guess. Thank you.
Selectman Clark?
I believe you.
No questions at this point.
All right. I have no further questions.
But can I ask, I don't want to read Chapter 44, but is there a chart? Does Chapter, is there a chart somewhere? I'd love to see the length of, the life length of certain debt. I've never seen that.
Yeah, generally, it's...
I don't want to read it.
Chapter 44, Section 7 and Section 8 deal with it.
If somebody finds a chart, could I get a copy of the chart?
I can, I can.
I'd love to see that.
I'll get her that.
Thank you.
So with the board's indulgence, this is a particular, particularly worded motion. Does anybody have a question?
I'll make a motion to, as presented.
But specifically, we'd like to note this section right here.
Right here?
Yes.
So to approve the sale of $4.575 million at 3% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated August 17, 2018, payable August 16, 2019, to TD Securities LLC at par and incurred interest, if any, plus a premium of $50,142.
Second.
Will that cover it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions were made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All in closed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 13. The board has requested to authorize the Cable TV Advisory Committee to conduct a public hearing as it relates to cable TV license extension for Verizon. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll actually turn this over to Assistant Town Manager Jen Breaker and the Chair of the Committee, Colleen Rebicki, are in the back of the room. But while they're collecting their paperwork, I will say essentially, what's required is that the board conduct one or more public hearings this fall. And the recommendation, as in the past, is that the board delegate that responsibility to the Cable Advisory Committee so that they can coordinate, plan for, and execute the public hearing process.
Thank you. Welcome.
I don't know if I have much more to...
We have something old, something new going on here. No offense, Travis.
I don't know if we have much more to add, other than what the town manager said at this point. The Cable Advisory Committee is on the track to be conducting the public hearing for the renewal of the Verizon license. We're looking at probably end of September, October for that public hearing, but we'd like to start planning and getting that information out sooner than later.
Jen, could you identify yourself for the public to watch the TV here?
Jen Breaker, Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Rebicki, anything to add to this?
No, I concur with the actions that are recommended, and it's been a pleasure to work with Jen and the committee, and also work with DCA to understand what their needs are as we begin to take a look into the future and look at the contract.
Board members, I'll start with you, Mr. Bennett.
No questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Clark?
No questions.
Mr. Mills?
Nothing, thank you.
So I had the great pleasure of attending this meeting, and it's obviously something I know nothing about. And I was really mostly impressed with the committee and how you think this is just some routine thing. A lot of work went into this, a lot of questions. There were a lot of items that had to be addressed in order to come to this conclusion. They had legal counsel. So I was really impressed. It's something I'm learning. I'm not a contract expert, but I'm really, kudos to you all. Really, a lot of work went on in addition to the meeting, and I was quite impressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions or comments. And I'll accept a motion by the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the...
Request.
Request to authorize the Cable TV Advisory Committee to conduct the public hearings on our behalf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 14. The board will consider whether to adopt the recently revised code of conduct. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the document that was distributed in June to the board, and some discussion occurred at that time. But the will of the board was to hold off on making any, taking any action or making any changes to this until Selectman Bennett had the opportunity to review and participate in that discussion. This is a distilled version of the much longer code of conduct policy that was adopted by the board back in the mid-2000s, and it was updated in a couple of areas, particularly related to social media and some of the forms of communication that have changed in the past decade or so. And if the board chooses to adopt this, this is something that we would distribute to all of our departments and liaisons, and make sure that every board and committee that represents and serves the town is provided a copy of this, so they understand what the Selectman's expectation is in terms of conduct with respect to communications and how they comport themselves as representatives of the town.
I'll open it up to discussions. Selectman Clark, would you like to start?
No, I have no questions and comments about this. Just wanted to have Dan have an opportunity to speak to it before we voted on it.
Selectman Mills?
Nothing further, thank you.
No, same as Bill. We wanted Dan to see it.
Thank you. I appreciate you waiting for me to come back to review this. I read it a couple of times. It seemed lengthy, and I looked for some duplication. There's none here. Everything is spelled out pretty clear. I appreciate that. But I did ask for a copy of the telecommunication policy, which we updated this three years ago. But I have some comments on the telecommunication policy that I think would be as much as it's referenced here at number seven. And I, the purpose, they talk about telecommunications systems, including telephones, personal I think the computers belong to the town. Really, I know what personal means with a computer, but I don't think they're personal computers as such. They belong to the town, and for town business only. Many businesses today don't allow their employees to access their emails on the company computer. We allow personal messages. It's not expressly prohibitive, but it is allowed, and I don't think it should be. And I don't think that's a hardship for any of our employees. They all have cell phones. They're able to receive their messages if they needed to be contacted. Indeed, I see some employees sitting at their desk with their cell phones checking their messages while in the office. So I wonder if we should update the telecommunication policy, and I, purpose, and then one, the use of personal emails, to prohibit that.
Well, we are in the process of updating the policy. Things are changing all the time in the IT world. I think the existing policy makes reference to things like MySpace and some platforms that aren't readily used anymore. And I, you know, personal computer, of course, is, I think, just the spelling out of PC, but we can, we will. But I think what I would suggest is, once we have, if there's interest, once we have that updated policy finalized, I can bring a copy back, or I can send you a copy, Dan, if you'd like to take a look at it.
So that's my comment, is on the telecommunication policy. As far as the code of conduct, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I just don't know if we want to make mention that telecommunication policy is amended in the future?
I think it's implied there that it's always the current, I think it's okay to just say the town's telecommunication policy.
Yeah, I would think both documents involve and not on a similar time about timeframe.
You know, are we really going to get in the business of micromanaging the personnel of Danvis? Isn't that the town manager's job? If he's got a problem with them looking at their emails in a certain way, then that's his job. I mean, I would hope that, I don't have a problem with people doing that because it's a way of life, but I really don't want to get into micromanaging the town personnel. He's our, he's our job.
Well, I agree with Selectman Bennett that the telecommunications need to be refreshed because things have changed in three years as far as technology goes.
That's fine.
And I think a statement that use of town assets is for town business. So I understand what you're saying about personal computers, though I too take the tact that it just delineates between a network computer and...
No, I understand, but, the mind of thing.
But I think, like all businesses do, all major corporations, including the one I work for, business conducted on a business asset is for business purpose only. And it's just a policy, and that's defined, and I don't think it's, we're going to go down and watch what you're typing or doing, but in the event of some need, if you've broken that, then you should be clear on what is allowed and what is not allowed. So that would be my feeling. I don't think it's micromanaging to set guidelines and rules.
So are we, so is there a motion that we're just doing the code of conduct tonight, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
So I'll actually entertain a motion regarding this subject.
So I move that we accept the code of contact, conduct document as presented this evening.
Second.
Questions were made and seconded. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And I think, as the town manager said, they're already reviewing the other document, so we don't have to ask him to do so. The board will consider whether to adopt, oh, we just did that. The town manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We started talking about Smith, so I'll start with the Smith School update. We had our, we had a building committee meeting this past Friday on August 3. That was, it was a productive meeting, and we had a number of meetings just prior to that. I did provide for your review the most recent OPM report that we received from our project manager, because there has been a lot going on recently, and the project will start to pick up speed once we get into the fall. We had a presentation to the MSBA, which was the same presentation that the board received in the spring in terms of the layout of the school on the site. The MSBA understood the site constraints that were presented to this board and that the building committee is well aware of in terms of wetlands on three sides, the need to construct the school next to the existing school, and have a safe buffer where you could have construction fencing surrounding the new structure without impacting academics or, you know, the outside play for the kids during construction. So it was, the presentation was well received by the state. They, of course, will be paying for half of this project, so we have to go to them and make these presentations throughout the project so that they have input. A presentation on the proposed layout of the site was made to DTAC on July 26. No major concerns were presented. The police department was comfortable with the traffic projections. There's a brief memo attached to the back of the OPM update from Aaron Henry summarizing that meeting. There was some discussion about crossing guards and some potential for sidewalks. And it was pointed out that when the project is completed, there will be a sidewalk terminating at the edge of the site. And at that point, I think Public Works will be looking through next year's capital budget or probably the subsequent year, because we'll be looking at a two-year construction cycle. But to extend those sidewalks out into the neighborhood, which don't currently exist, is something the neighbors expressed interest in, and we think makes a lot of sense. I did note a little while ago, we do have, based on the very preliminary cost estimates for the project, the estimators are about $51.7 million, which is about 3% ahead of where we wanted to be based on the budget numbers that we've been working with for the last year or two. At this point in the project, that's not, that's not unexpected. Right now, they're basing their estimate on a conceptual design, so they haven't designed the buildings yet. That's what's going to start to occur in August and September. The local share, based on that preliminary design, is a little higher than we would have liked, and that's, we were projecting $27.5 million in local share on the $50 million project. We're looking at around $30 million based on that preliminary design. That's driven almost entirely by the site. There's a cap in terms of reimbursement on site work, and because of the grade changes on that site and the constraints on that site, the site costs are projected to be a little higher than we thought. Both are within, you know, reason at this point. And I do want to, I'm sharing it because we have it, but I want to stress that really the next couple of months is where that number gets refined. Once the building, once the design starts, we'll be able to dial in those numbers. And related to that, the board, I'm sorry, the building committee approved an acceleration of the selection of the construction manager for the project. That's something that we'll be submitting to the MSBA. And the rationale there, that's atypical. Generally, you would go to town meeting, get a project budget approved, and then go through the 30B process for selecting a construction manager. There are several advantages to starting that process early. Most importantly, we want to maintain our project timeline. As has been pointed out, we're, forget about interest rate escalation. We're looking at around 1% per quarter right now for construction cost escalation. So that's 4% a year.
Wow.
So we, you know, we're on a timeline to try to get this project before the town meeting by January or February of this year, which will allow us to start construction early next year, which will allow us to wrap up the construction. I get the fiscal years and calendar years backwards, just like everybody else. But I think the fall of 2020, in any case, the accelerated timeline now should allow us to open the school a year earlier than otherwise. And I think that's really important with respect to the variables we were talking about. So the concern could be, why are we hiring a CM if we don't have a project approved yet? And the answer for that is, by doing the construction manager at-risk project, which is something the school committee, the school building committee voted... the school building committee voted to support, we'll essentially get a guaranteed maximum price from the CM before they start the project. By hiring them in the fall and putting the design documents in front of them before we go to town meeting, we will have a third set of eyes reviewing all of the cost assumptions, all of the sub-trades, all of the design. And it'll give us just another layer of, level of confidence when we go to town meeting because we will, at that point, have all of the, all of the parties at the table. Typically, you'd go to town meeting with the architect having designed the building and the OPM having reviewed it. But oftentimes, the construction manager comes in and gets the drawings and finds things that nobody else thought about. And because of the way that the staging on this project is setting up in terms of having to operate within proximity of a school, we want the CM onboard early to look at that phasing and point out anything that the architect or the OPM may have missed. So the comfort for town meeting will be that when the school building committee goes through this process in the fall, all they will be committing to the CM is payment to do a review of construction drawings. We still need to get town meeting approval in order to engage them on the project. But I think there are a lot of benefits to getting that process started now. It'll save us time on the other side and we'll have a better comfort level with the project budget once we get to town meeting in the spring, which is really critical. So looking forward, the school building committee will be meeting again on September 14th for a design update from the architect. And the next milestone they need to hit is to submit the schematic design back to the MSBA on October 16th. So they'll be meeting again on October 12th. And I think if the board were interested, we could schedule a presentation, another update from the architect. We had one in the spring. And if the board would like, we could schedule one for the second meeting in September so that the board could see what the school building committee had seen. After we submit to the MSBA in mid-October, we're anticipating October, November, December really being focused on public presentations and forums. We think we're going to adopt the model we use for the Maple Street I-1, which would be to set up a Saturday workshop for town meeting members, bring in coffee and donuts and answer questions in a very informal setting. That seemed to work really well. I think it was well received by town meeting members. We'll, of course, do the traditional forum at the Smith School, but I think we're also looking, you know, are there other interesting ways to kind of bring the project out to the community and let them know what the building committee's been working on? So that was, that's where we are at the Smith School. As I said, I think it's going to start to pick up speed here in the fall. Now that summer's over, we've given the school building committee a bit of a break, but now time to get to work. Quick item, a follow-up from our last meeting. There was a one-day liquor license request to host a corporate cup at St. John's Prep. And one of the board members asked if revenue-generating activities like that were permitted on the grounds of a nonprofit, if that activity was unrelated to the mission of that nonprofit. In this case, I think Boston Children's Hospital was hosting a corporate cup to raise money for their mission in Boston. And a rental agreement was negotiated with St. John's Prep to use the campus for that fundraising event. And so the question was, is that permitted? And further, is that taxable activity? And the answer is, yes, it's permitted. And yes, under certain circumstances, that is taxable activity. But it's a complicated process to determine the taxability of activities like that with potentially limited revenue. And I think, you know, step one would be to make a request of the prep to share some of that information. And I think the position of the prep has been made pretty clear to date that they're not interested in participating voluntarily in a program like this. So, you know, we would be looking at compelling them to turn over information at the ATB. And ultimately, we would assume litigation in court. And at this point, I don't think that's something that makes a lot of sense. But that was the question that was asked. And, you know, the, what it ultimately comes down to is that the ATB or the court would be looking at what parts of the campus or buildings, and, you know, in certain cases, just a building. But in this case, what parts of the campus are being used to generate, you know, revenue that is not related to education for what parts of the year, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a fairly complicated formula and a fairly complicated process. And I think, again, I think that the prep has respectfully declined to participate in our pilot program. And I wouldn't recommend that we pursue that.
Any comments on that subject?
The word respectfully is a little off.
I was the person who asked the question based on the application that was here before. So we've noted that the prep is using the property for profitable undertaking unrelated to its charter as a religious, its direction is covered under their tax-exempt status. But as the town manager has explained, the return on investment or town assets in time is negligible on this one. So it's unfortunate, but it's noted. Did you have something you want to offer?
I just, you have to be very careful in how vague a comment you're making, that's all. So I agree with the town manager that we shouldn't pursue anything. We should continue to pursue the pilot. But as far as profitability, I just would slow down.
Well, they rented out their property for a purpose unrelated to the charter that gives them tax-exempt status.
And I'm just going to drop it there.
Any other comments on that? Thank you.
Always an expense.
Just on a lighter note, but on a lighter note, on August 22nd, the department heads will be cooking and serving food at the senior center as part of their Wednesday lunch. This is something Pam Parkinson and her staff, people may not know, do all of the cooking and serving at those events. And this is, I have to give Jen Breaker credit. This is her brainchild. But, you know, Pam is always looking for help to serve lunches to the seniors. And so we've put the offer out to staff and divisions. If any division wants to sign up and it's not going to impact a project that they're trying to get done or service to the public and they want to go over and dress down and do some cooking and serving, we're encouraging that. So we're going to start later this month by doing so. I think steak tips are on the menu. So make sure we wear aprons so we don't get covered in whatever delicious sauce they're marinating in as we, maybe not as we speak, but...
Going to get certified server safe to do this?
No way. Definitely not.
What's the steak tip date?
The 22nd.
Which side of the table you want, serving or receiving?
I'm a senior citizen.
He wants it on his Monday night.
And I go up there, I don't want to miss that one.
Well, I mean, I want to share it tonight because if there are seniors out there who have a question or a comment, or, I mean, we don't get many complaints, but if they have a complaint that they want to share with the department head, we'll be there on the 22nd, serving lunch, and we will look forward to having a good conversation while we're there, so.
Isn't that cute?
I did distribute just tonight a copy of our most recent notification from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, that our comprehensive annual financial report once again qualified for the award. That's something that's really important to us. It's a sign that we are transparent in communicating our expenditures and that we're communicating those consistent with best practice. So kudos to Travis and Cory and Grace and her staff. It's a lot of work, really, I mean, every department in the organization touches the, you know, the year-end close and the processes that they all have in place at the recommendation of finance staff are what allow us to do this. So this is a, kind of a, flies under the radar, but I think it's a really important practice that the town decided to pursue many years ago. And I'll close noting that we have had a good response so far for the finance director position we were just reviewing, the applications received to date. We have an initial review set for August 15th on that, which means at that point, we'll take a look at the candidates that we have and we'll pull together a panel. We always bring in an outside professional within the field. So in this case, we'll pull in a finance director from a community that we have confidence in and they'll help us to interview finalists. And obviously, they'll need to give, once we make a decision, they'll need to give some notice. But our plan right now is to have somebody in place well before the budget process starts in the fall. So there's never a good time to lose your finance director. But this is, this is not a terrible time in terms of the, kind of the peaks and valleys of the year. We're, you know, we're getting ready to start the audit and we've got a little bit of breathing room before the budget starts. So we'll get by somehow without Travis, but hopefully not for too long.
Are there any questions or comments on the town manager's updates, any items? If not, I'll move to agenda 16, correspondence. Selectmen's new business, previous new public business updates, and closing comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. One comment I have, one question. I have an elderly person from town who commented, contacted me this week relative to the road construction project on Pine Street. And she was concerned that the town was not following its guidelines of starting things after 7:00 in the morning. The milling process outside of her front door started at 6:30. They had staged equipment right after 6:00 in the morning. And I just want to make sure that we're not doing and disrupting neighborhoods too early in the morning with the work that we're doing and then expecting businesses in town not to conduct their business before 7:00 in the morning.
Did you have a date?
It was the day they milled Pine Street by the end of Adams Street, down near the Rebecca Nurse House. Okay, I forget which day it was, but it was the second day, I think, of milling because they, I think they spent three days milling the street down. I personally have a concern with that particular street. When they've milled it down, there were certain areas of that street that deteriorated dramatically through frost heaving. Is there any kind of preparation going to be done for those specific places where the road was really badly deteriorated? Or are they just milling it down? Because those spaces, it looks like the base is not stable that they're going to be laying the pavement on. And I hate to see the same thing happen repeatedly two or three years later where we have these low pockets. I'm talking now, one that's just north of the Bruce Street intersection, for example. I'm only aware of that because I drove over it a lot and the street really fell apart badly in that area. And it doesn't seem to be as stable, what's left there now after they milled it. So I don't know what the plan is to do that. But I'm glad to see they're going to get rid of that surface because the surface was terrible. Not as bad as Mass Avenue, but still terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen Mills?
Nothing, thank you.
So I have a few. So in our packet, there was a letter from Brett Gonzalez. And what he did was he responded on some concerns we've had from citizens about the transfer station. And I just want to thank him again because that's what we're supposed to do. And he went through and he tweaked a few things that were a problem. So I appreciate that, that that was in response to some problems neighbors were having. I want to compliment the town manager. When Hotwatt was closing down, I reminded him that a lot of single parents work there. They avoid daycare and losing those jobs would have been awful. He did a great job in having them stay in Danvers and is now trying to make sure that there's continued transportation for those people. It's a lower-income type job and we certainly don't want to lose some of those that allow people to have a second income or in some cases, probably a first income in their home. I'm all complimentary tonight. I did have a complaint tonight that the Ideal Baby Shoe is starting construction Saturday mornings at 6:30. So I don't know, I haven't seen it, so I don't like to usually say that. Now my compliments. Paid my electric and water bill today online. I don't know who did that, if that was Travis or Cory who changed that website. Oh my God, what a difference. It's fantastic, so much easier. The last one was difficult for people. You had to put in information, half of it was wrong. It even lets you memorize things. So great job on that website. You know, these smart people think the rest of us understand when it's a difficult website. And the best job you do is to make it so simple some of us that can do it. So good job there. The road work I'm seeing in Danvers, I don't know if we've changed contractors. I don't know if it's different than Mr. Clark is seeing. The prep work, but the roads are gorgeous. The road work I've seen, the tiring and everything, is amazing. They're beautiful. I'm very impressed. If somebody doesn't agree with me, I wish they'd let me know where they're seeing it, but I'm quite impressed. I was complaining that, because I have to drive to bedfit a couple of nights a week now, and I come home very late. And 128, of course, I get caught up in the 128 thing and I get mad because all the construction was stopping in Peabody. And I'm like, what's Benton Court got that we don't have? Until I got caught talking to Officer Baldassari one night while I was waiting for all the trucks to load on and see that we're in Danvers. And I'm thrilled because 128's looking good, too. And I'm glad, I was also mad because I only saw Peabody cops and they were in Danvers and I was bull until I saw Officer Baldassari. And he told me that, don't worry, Diane, we're getting our fair share. So I was happy there. So other than that, Gardner and I have talked on the other issues, one being a bridge and all, and it seems like the chairman's handled all the other things. But I'm really, compliments tonight. I think, I think our summer work has been going on great. And I'm really impressed. So thank you to the DPW and all others involved. That's it for me.
Thank you. My comments, a couple of things. Just a reminder that the selectmen notes are reminders that we, the town office is closed on the September 3rd. There is an election. Mr. Clark, would you just elaborate? I give you an opportunity to speak even more tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask for a couple moments at the end of the meeting. State primary on Tuesday, September 4th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Vi Gym at Danvers High School. I don't expect any traffic issues or parking issues because school is not in session. But keep in mind, it's the day after Labor Day. Not generally an election day, but due to a conflict with the Jewish holidays, the Secretary of State moved the election date up. So it's Tuesday, September 4th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Vi Gym.
Will we have the normal lighted signs and banner over the town?
That is the normal process and we will have that in place, yes.
Thank you.
Joe, do you expect 10% turnout?
Based on the activity to date, I would say 10% would be a godsend. I mean, we have ballots and there are no races. There's no races on the ballot. So I can see that the voter activity probably is going to be quite small.
Too bad.
Maybe you can organize a write-in.
Maybe.
All right, thank you. So a couple of things. One, I just point to the town manager to consider looking at, one area of opportunity to improve the web expressions of the town is I recently bought a washing machine. Look for Energy Star and the rebate program. It actually wasn't, the washing machines weren't listed, but when I called, they are. And the forms I did receive from the town are all dated and reference documents from 2015. Obviously, there's a standard list of what you can purchase and what you can't, but that list was dated, the application was dated 2015. I went to the federal site that lists what are appropriate models and they're now at 2018. So we just might want the opportunity to, just, again, an opportunity for improvement, that's all.
You'll be pleased to know we are actively recruiting an energy efficiency coordinator to fill a position that's been vacant for some time. And this would fall squarely within the responsibilities of that position. the responsibilities of that position.
I'm making my application with 2018 figures, so let's hope it flies.
And to that point, Gardner, we bought a dryer, and there's no rebate program for a dryer.
You may want to call. I called before I did the washer, because it wasn't on the website. Ended up washers are.
Well, I was upstairs, and that dryer, there's no rebate on them. So I think that's something else to look at.
I love rebates.
Yeah, me too. So I spent a little bit more, got a better quality machine than I may have, with the understanding that the rebate would offset the, the difference and reduce my carbon footprint at the same time, so. I do want to, on behalf of Danvers Stanley Festival, this is our first meeting since the festival wrapped up. DFF is about to go into its 40th year. We're excited about our 40th year. We are looking for people to join us, offer some fresh blood, some fresh eyes, some new ideas. We, if you look on our website or our Facebook page, we have monthly meetings, and we really encourage people who might want to help us celebrate 40 and, and become active in our group to, to contact us, and we'll, we'll work with you. There's some new ideas that have popped up, and every time I see something happen, over the summers, there were some citizens who organized a town-wide yard sale, and we'd like to work with them to kind of fold it under our umbrella, at least for public, publicity. And we often remind people that this is an all-volunteer group, but I do want to say that we couldn't do it without the support of the town. The town government, the town, the town management is very gracious in providing some amenities and services, the DPW, the cleaning up and preparing for the Oldies Night, for example, the electricity that's, you know, set up and provided for us to some of our events. We do play for police, some, many of our events, we play police detail, but often, they also consider that part of their normal community policing, and, and don't necessarily charge us for some events. The use of Endicott Park, the use of other property, town properties around town, is greatly appreciated by Family Festival in order to promote and, and hold events that are, for community activities. So I do want to thank the town administration and the town departments, specifically on behalf of Family Festival, for all their support and help, and over our two-and-a-half-week period. So thank you very much, and if you'll pass that along with the town manager. That's all I had, and so now we'll wrap with the.
Can I make a motion, point something out to, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So it says correspondence, selectmen new business, following review of consent calendar.
I apologize.
No, no, we always leave it to the end. Why don't you just make a line above, before us, so we get the consent calendar out of the way?
Absolutely, wise idea. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Manager, would you make a agenda item ahead of our last one to accept the consent calendar?
Absolutely.
So I make a motion to accept the consent calendar with a question. Our September meeting is at 7:00?
That's the point I wanted to discuss before we.
Because I had six written down.
Yep, the, there was a flurry of email this summer from Aaron Henry. He is, he's ready to launch the C1, C1A effort to look at the downtown this fall, which was a priority of the board's for the, for this year. But before that happens, we all, we all agree it's important to have our tri-board meeting, which we've been trying to schedule since the spring. So we've, we've targeted the Thursday, September 6th, which is, which is our next meeting date, at 6:00 PM, to hold a tri-board meeting with the planning board and the ZBA at 6:00, and then we'll start our normal meeting at 7:00. Thanks for mentioning that.
Excellent clarification.
We don't have another meeting, I guess.
Okay, all right, so that's at 6:00. So motion to accept the consent calendar?
Yes.
Motion made, and, Joy, here, second?
Second.
Motion made and second, to accept the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Selectmen Clark, did you have something else, or was that it? Okay. Then I turn to Selectmen Bennett.
So I have no correspondence on new business at this time, so at this time, I'd like to remind people to thank the veterans that are out there, past veterans, or not past, that are not active, and the active folks that are protecting our country, and wish them all well.
Thank you. Except for motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Made and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good night, Davis. Thank you.
Bye.